I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Baldwin Park Planning Commission for March 11, 2020. Commissioner Garido, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Chair.
Christopher Sines.
Present.
Commissioner Edwin Borkas.
Commissioner Edith Flores.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher Garido.
Present.
And Commissioner Marley Garcia.
Present.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to excuse Commissioner Borkas.
So move.
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, I now declare oral communications open. Anyone wishing to address the commission on anything other than the items listed on the agenda may speak at this time. Please state your name and address and restrict your comments to three minutes. Seeing no further interest, I now declare oral communications closed. Moving on to consent calendar. Do we have a motion to adopt the action minutes from February 12, 2020?
Chairperson, since I was not a commissioner at that time, I would recuse myself from this item.
Thank you.
I motion to pass those minutes.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero with one extension. At this time, we're going to move on to public hearing. Case number two, the consideration and adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program in conjunction with a request for consideration and approval of a tentative parcel map to consolidate four lots into one to facilitate the development of a 10,345 square foot commercial building and a zoning variance to deviate from the minimum lot depth and minimum lot size for lots in the industrial commercial zone, location 13127 Garvey Avenue, applicant, and suitcase number TPM 1438 and ZV 716. Mr. Ron Garcia.
Thank you, Procham. Good evening, members of the commission. Before you tonight is a request for approval of a tentative parcel map to merge four existing lots, four existing lots on an existing alleyway and one along an existing alleyway, excuse me, and on to one lot. Zoning variance to deviate from zoning standards is also requested, wow, I can speak tonight, for minimum lot depth of 200 feet and minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet for lots within the industrial commercial zone to facilitate the development of a 10,345 square foot commercial building, which will include 35 parking spaces located at 13127 Garvey Avenue, Baldwin Park. The project site is within the general plan, best Garvey I-10 focus area. Primary goal of this focus area is to encourage the development of low scale, low intensity commercial and industrial uses oriented primarily towards serving the local resident and business population. The project site is zoned for industrial commercial uses, which includes the development of industrial parks, office complexes, and light manufacturing businesses. The project site and adjacent properties along Garvey Avenue have a general plan designation of commercial industrial. Properties located to the west of the project site are designated for commercial industrial uses as well, and those include, with respect to existing uses, are a motel, a small commercial office, and a collection of vacant parcels and an auto repair shop. To the east are additional small commercial offices and storage warehouses designated for industrial commercial uses, as well as a public facility use. The northern boundary of the project site lies adjacent to the properties designated for garden multifamily residential land uses. And again, this is just an aerial, again, you have the garden multifamily zoning here, and here you see there are vacant parcels to the west, and here's the subject property. And again, as mentioned, this is the city yard, which is a public facility use. And again, you can see that it is adjacent to Garvey Avenue and along the I-10. The project site is approximately 33,368 square feet and consists of four parcels, three of which are contiguous. All four parcels are currently vacant, while the lot adjacent to the site, the city yard, consists of parking. The alleyway has access to Fraser Street at its western terminus and to Garvey Avenue at its southern terminus. Restaurant and apartment building previously occupied the subject property at one point. Access to the project site is provided by Garvey Avenue, Fraser Street, and Fair Grove The project consists of construction of a two-story concrete tilt-up commercial building with a 10,345 square foot floor area. Proposed building would include 2,000 square feet of office space and 5,518 square foot showroom and a 2,540 square foot storage area. Total of 35 parking spaces are proposed. In addition, a total of 3,973 square feet of landscaping is proposed on site. Landscaping is located around the perimeter of the site and within the parking area. The proposed landscaping is approximately 12% of the overall site area, where the municipal code only requires 10%, so they're above the required landscaping requirement. Landscaping will serve to soften the aesthetic appearance of the building from the street, and a final landscape plan is required per the conditions of approval. And again, just an overview of the site plan, here's Garvey, and here is the 35 parking spaces, which are located behind the proposed two-story building, and these are the parking spaces which are adjacent to the city yard, the public facility building here on the easterly side. And again, you have landscaping proposed throughout the site and throughout the parking lot. And again, to the north is the alleyway, which abuts the multifamily residential uses to the north. The proposed development will be visible from the surrounding area, including the surrounding streets and buildings. The proposed concrete building would be 34 feet tall and would be painted in a variety of colors. The project consists of construction, again, has a two-story commercial building with a maximum height of 34 feet. The proposed commercial building reflects a modern architectural style. The exterior facade and new perimeter wall will be concrete block with shades of gray, white, and tan. Again, this shows you the east and south elevations. Here we see the west and northerly elevation. The project site is subject to development standards set forth in the code with respect to the industrial commercial zone. The minimum lot area is 40,000 square feet, and the minimum lot width is 150 feet, and the minimum lot depth is 200 feet. All of the parcels do not individually meet the minimum lot area or width or depth, again, then classifying them as legal non-conforming lots. When merged, the newly created parcel will become an approximately 33,368 square foot lot with 194 square foot width and 172 foot depth. Therefore, while the newly created parcel will fall short of the required lot depth and size, consolidating the parcels will lend itself to be more conforming with respect to what's required in the code based on its proximity and availability to land in the area would make it difficult to comply with the lot depth and width and also lot size. A resolution of approval has been prepared to grant the tentative parcel map for the lot consolidation and also the variance exception for not meeting the width and depth with respect to the parcel map. And again, this is the tentative parcel map, which shows you the three parcels here. I would also like to add that a street, a alley vacation, this is a city-owned property here, essentially it's a, it'll be one of the conditions of approval required to do a vacation, so essentially would allow the applicant, the property owner, to take responsibility for maintaining this area. The alley would still provide access from the alley to Garvey and essentially make it one lot. And again, here are the parking spaces that are adjacent to the facility here and showing the alley. And again, one of the conditions of approval is to go through an alley vacation once the tentative, prior to the tentative parcel map being recorded. Final design review approval, in accordance with the municipal code, there is a highest designated, indicates that the highest designated approving authority for all requested permits shall take final action on all permits. Therefore, while the design review committee tentatively approve the design review of the proposed project, the approval of the tentative parcel map and the zoning variance by the planning commission will constitute the final approval of the design review. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution certifying the mitigated negative declaration that was circulated for 30 days. Comments were not received during that time that the environmental document was released for review. Therefore, staff is recommending approval, that the commission approve the tentative parcel map and the zone variance. I would also like to add that the environmental consultant is present for any further questions with respect to the environmental document, and also the applicant is also present for any questions with respect to operation of the facility and such. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions of staff by the commission? There are no further questions of staff. I will now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to testify on this matter either for or against? Please state your name and address. Please restrict your comments to three minutes. Seeing no further interest, I now close the public hearing. Commission, is there any discussion?
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution PC 20-06, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Baldwin Park adopting a mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the 13127 Garvey Avenue project, location 13127 Garvey, and Resolution PC 20-07, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Baldwin Park approving a tentative parcel map to merge four parcels, APN 855-022-037, 855, 8556-022-038, 8556-022-039, and 8556-022-040 into one parcel pursuant to Section 150.08, and to deviate from the minimum 200 lot depth development standard set forth in Table 153.050.030 for lots in the industrial commercial zone to facilitate the construction of a 10,345 square foot commercial building with service parking in the industrial commercial zone at 13127 Garvey Avenue in the City of Baldwin Park.
Mr. Chairman, does that also include adopting the findings of fact contained in page five, six, and seven?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Both Resolution PC-20-07 and PC-20-06 are adopted four zero. This time, we're going to introduce the second case, a request for consideration of and a recommendation of approval to the planning commission to facilitate the construction of a new 1,849 square foot drive-through restaurant, and conditional use permit for the operation of a drive-through restaurant, Jack in the Box, and a zone variance to allow for the deviation from development standards, including a drive-through lane to face three sides of a building and to allow 30-foot reduction in queuing distance to order menu board.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the commission. So before you is conditional permit, conditional use permit application CP 20-01, requesting approval to allow the operation of a drive-through Jack in the Box restaurant and a zone variance application ZV 20-01 to allow for deviation from development standards, including a drive-through lane to face three sides of a building, and to allow a 30-foot reduction in queuing distance to an order menu board, all within the C2 general commercial zone. The project site consists of a vacant building and provides access via a two-way driveway along Ramona Parkway, Stewart Avenue, and Ramona Boulevard. The subject site is approximately 19,025 square feet and is irregular in shape. The general plan land use designation of this property is general commercial, which is consistent with the property's C2 general commercial zone. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing restaurant building and to construct a one-story, 1,849 square foot Jack in the Box restaurant with a drive-through. Access to the drive-through restaurant will be provided by an exiting driveway on Ramona Parkway, Ramona Parkway and Stewart Avenue. No new curb cuts are proposed along Ramona Boulevard, but the applicant has proposed a new curb cut along Ramona Parkway and to remove an existing driveway. Parking is proposed on the south and east sides of the new building, and 18 parking spaces are required for this site. For the Baldwin Park zoning code, parking requirement for restaurants is one space for every 100 square feet of building area, so that would bring this project to require 18 parking spaces, which is what is being provided. The landscaping for this project is located around the perimeter of the lot, adjacent to the building, and within the parking areas. The proposed landscaping represents 33% of the overall site area, and a final landscape and irrigation plan are required per the conditions of approval. The restaurant would have a traditional layout with indoor, with an indoor dining area, kitchen, and service area. The facade design will include varying roof elements, parapet walls ranging in height from 21 feet to a maximum of 23 feet and 2 inches. The south elevation of the building features a combination of hardy plank, porcelain tile, and cement plaster. The proposed Jack in the Box is contemporary in style and is designed in accordance with the restaurant's chain's new corporate architecture. Customer entrances to the building are on the south and west elevations of the building, and the storefronts include andenized black framing with a clear glass. Additionally, metal coping will be installed on all elevations. Okay, included in your agenda packets is a letter of objection that was dated March 3, 2020. That was mailed to planning staff from the adjacent property owner's attorney in objection of this project, but from the time that you've received these agenda packets, property owners, all property owners have come to an agreement, and planning staff received a letter of withdrawal dated March 9, 2020 for the letter of objection that was initially submitted, and staff has provided you a copy of that letter of withdrawal as well. Part of the property owner's agreements was to provide modifications to the original site plan. The revised site plan, which is on page three of your letters of withdrawal, indicates that the trash enclosure be relocated, and two new parking stalls will be installed in the previous location of the trash enclosure. I would also like to make a note that there has been modifications provided by the City of Public Works Department in the resolution that was, that you received in your agenda packets. So sections, if you can turn to sections four, no, section four, items JJ and OO, those have been modified to read as follows. So item JJ, applicant shall construct and modify a five-foot wide sidewalk along Ramona Boulevard and Ramona Parkway, the length of the driveway approach that will be closed and behind the existing curb and new driveway approach in accordance with current American Public Works Association standards. All public improvements shall be approved by the city engineer, constructed with an encroachment permit, and completed prior to final inspection and certificate of occupancy issuance. Condition OO will read as, prior to building occupancy, applicant shall construct the base and pavement for all streets that will be affected by the development, in according with soil reports provided by a California-registered geotechnical engineer and approved by the city engineer or as otherwise directed by the city engineer. And again, I had provided you a new resolution to reflect these changes.
Also like to add, commissioners, that the resolution changes were also provided to the applicant for their review prior to presenting tonight.
So to conclude, staff recommends that the planning commission approve Resolution PC 20-04 to approve CP 20-01, and the applicant is present for any questions as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the commission? There are no further questions of staff. I now declare the public hearing open. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this project, please come up, state your name and address. You have three minutes. If there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the project, please come up, state your name and address. You have three minutes. Seeing no further interest, I now close the public hearing. Is there any discussion?
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution PC 20-04, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Baldwin Park approving the construction of a new 1,849 square foot drive-through restaurant, and conditional use permit for the operation of a drive-through restaurant, Jack in the Box, and a zone variance to allow for the deviation from development standards, including a drive-through lane to face three sides of a building and to allow a 30-foot reduction in queuing distance to order menu board. Location 14021 Ramona Parkway, applicant Andrea Acevitz, case number CP 20-01 and ZV 20-01, and adopt the findings of fact.
We have a motion?
Is that your motion, or?
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
At this time, we're going to move on to case number four, a request of approval of a conditional use permit to allow for alcohol sales and live entertainment in conjunction with a restaurant within existing 5,693 square tenant space located in the Park Plaza Shopping Center. The project is located within the mixed-use one zone, location 4120 Main Avenue. Applicant Adriana Cervantes, case number CP 20-02. Mr. Ron Garcia.
So planning technician Melissa Chirpous will be doing the presentation.
So before you is conditional use permit application CP 20-02, requesting approval to allow alcohol sales and live entertainment in conjunction with a restaurant within the mixed-use one zone. On February 3, 2020, the planning division received the said conditional use permit application from Adriana Cervantes. The proposed restaurant with alcohol sales and live entertainment will be located within the Park Plaza Shopping Center, within the mixed-use one zone, and is bound by Main Avenue, Ramona Boulevard, and Bogart Avenue. The proposed restaurant will be located at the southwest corner of the shopping center. The project site is designated as mixed-use in the City of Baldwin Park's general plan. The proposed project is consistent with the city's general plan as well. The site is currently developed with a mixture of retail shops and restaurants, and the subject project area is approximately 5,693 square feet. The applicant is proposing an alcohol use type 47 permit to allow an on-sale beer and wine for an eating place. The 5,693 square foot restaurant will consist of a dining room, service counter, kitchen, storage rooms, walk-in freezers, and a men and women's restroom. In conjunction with alcohol sales and restaurant use, the applicant is also proposing live entertainment, Sunday through Monday, in form of banda norteño, and will feature mariachi occasionally on Sundays. In an effort to mitigate any issues in regards to noise, staff has conditioned the hours in which the restaurant will have live entertainment, and these hours have been provided to you in the business operations plan in your agenda packets. Staff did receive a call from a representative from Superior Grocers, which is located in the same shopping center where the proposed restaurant is going to be opening. Their concerns were, they had questions about whether the restaurant will be providing any security guards. So staff spoke to the applicant, who clarified that there will be a minimum one security guard present during hours of operation and up to two on Friday and Saturday evenings. Staff has also conditioned the applicant to submit a security plan that must be approved by the city's police department prior to receiving their final certificate of occupancy. So to conclude, staff recommends that the planning commission approve Resolution PC 20-05 to approve CP 20-02. Oh, I'm sorry, and the applicant is also present for any questions.
Thank you. At this time, is there any questions of staff by the commission?
Maybe, I don't know if it's for the staff or for the restaurant owner, what are the hours of operation on the weekends when you're going to have entertainment there? Do we know?
Yes, so staff has included a business operations plan on page five of the business operations plan. Okay, so yeah, live entertainment will be from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and then, I'm sorry, Monday through Thursday, Friday from 4:00 PM to 12:30 AM, and then Saturdays from 2:00 PM to 12:30 AM, and Sunday 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
There's always an issue or concern with security in these types of establishments. We have another similar type of existing establishment, and we're always hearing concerns from the residents who live around that area. I know this particular site, there are no residential homes, other than the building here next to us, but the complaints that I hear from individuals who live around that area on the other side is, again, the loud music, the noise after the event is closed, and people lingering, and, and, again, loud music as they're leaving. Security is also an issue. This other location does provide additional security when that happens. Again, to mitigate these problems, I just want to make sure that this location will also be able to address those issues, or hopefully we address them before they're approved. And I'm sorry, I'm just now seeing the report, so I don't have this information.
Yes, those are all good points, Commissioner Garcia. One thing we, that's why we, as the planner indicated, that to help mitigate any potential negative impacts that the, that the security plan be reviewed and approved with the police department prior to them even operating. So if there's... So if there's issues with the security plan, another added condition that we placed in the resolution, which would allow if there's any potential impacts that develop from the operation of the, of the, of the restaurant with the live entertainment allows the commission to review the conditional use permit for, for consideration.
Very good. Well, let's hope because they're close to the police department, there won't be any problems, right?
If there are no further questions of staff, I now declare the public hearing open. If there's anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this project, please come up. You have, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Paul Hernandez. I'm at 4067 Cutler. I do support this project. The one thing I would actually ask is for folks to consider the development of future homes that are going to be created across the street. One of the things that the council's looking at is across the street from Viamar, Viamadre, we are actually, the city is actually looking at trying to develop that out. So there will be additional more homes there. And across the street also from where we're standing now, we're also looking at doing additional homes there. We do have, the city does have exclusive negotiating rights with those potential developers. So as we look at this, this business and more importantly, the hours of operations, that's something I'd like for, hopefully, we all consider as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to thank council member, or council member Paul Hernandez for joining us tonight. If there's anybody in the audience that's here to speak in opposition to the project, please come up. You have, please state your name and address. You have three minutes. Seeing no further interest, I now close the public hearing. Commission? Commission, is there any further discussion?
At this time, I move to adopt Resolution PC 20-05, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park adopting the findings of fact and approving a conditional use permit for alcohol sales and live entertainment in conjunction with a restaurant within an existing 5,693 square tenant space located in the Park Plaza Shopping Center. The project is located within the mixed-use one zone, location 4120 Main Avenue. Applicant Adriana Cervantes, case number CP 20-02.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution PC 20, 20-05 is adopted 4-0. At this time, we'll move to the reports of officers.
Yes, first and foremost, I want to welcome our new, our newest planning commissioner, Marlene Garcia. We're all very excited to have you on the commission. We have been waiting some time.
You have, I have.
We're a full planning commission. And so we want to welcome you and we look forward to working with you and I, along with the planning staff.
Thank you so much.
I also want to inform the commission that we, that our next planning commission meeting is going to be April 8th. And at the April 8th meeting, having said the fact that we, we have a full commission now, we will now be able to move forward with the election of vice chair and chair. So we, I will be providing a staff report for the commission to act on that. So that will be April 8th. Thank you.
Commission, any comments?
Chairperson? I'd just like to say thank you to all of you for your support. It took a while to be appointed to the position, but that was okay. I, I'm fine with it. For those in the audience, I'm a former council member in the City of Baldwin Park and have been in retirement for about, I want to say, five years now. And so in that time, I became a grandmother and things changed and I thought, you know, this is an opportunity to continue to give back to my community. I raised my children here and now the grandchildren are coming. And so I want to make sure that we're creating a wonderful and thriving environment for the future generation of Baldwin Park. The council has done an excellent job at setting a path for us to, to continue. And I'm excited about my community. I moved in in 1993. I bought my house in 1999 when they were affordable. And, and so, again, as I said, raised my children. They went to school here and I just, and I work here locally at the Kaiser Permanente. And, and so I'm really looking forward to continuing to contribute to this community. As you all see, it is a community on the move. We've had so much improvements in the last 20 years and, and it's just getting better. And, and it's exciting to be living in Baldwin Park during these times. And I thank you for coming to this meeting tonight and finding interest in our community. And if you live here, thank you for being a resident of our community. And I look forward to working with, with all the planning commissioners, with the attorney and staff. And I thank you all for the warm welcome. Thank you.
We're excited to have you here with us and look forward to working together for the months to come. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 7:38. Fiva, Baldwin Park.